I've heard you. They've been cheating.
My last second.
They keep, hey, I don't know why this is alive down here to. It might be successful or accepting. We don't see your lives on YouTube, but the work going here. I don't know why. Who has seen the year? Both of you ordered the two. Same as I was. I don't know what it is. There's fifteen words in there that you think. Yeah.
I've reverted.
No, like that.
A lot of reading.
Let me just get rid of this.
They keep trapping.
And sneak in the middle there and turn that up. Thank you, sir. Yeah. I've done that before. In my younger days, I would have limboed green under there, but I'm not so sprout anymore that I can do that.
All right, we're live, Tom.
We're good. Yeah, we're ready.
Good evening. This is the meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty five, casting plan board. Wonderful way this voice decides they don't make this point. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding and a public has the right to hear everything that is being said. Unless the board votes to enter executive session permanence through the Access Act. The public also has the right to review any of the materials created or received by the board that relate to boards for liberation, unless the state law makes the document confidential. We have a quorum tonight. It's Penny Carlin, Bruce Vostolich, and Tom Kamashado, the chair. Absent tonight is Jim Bernard and also Charles Hodgkins. The agenda for tonight includes application by Danielle Muddy with contractor Steve Skilling for eighty-five Water Street, map twenty-four, lot fifty-eight. The application seeks a permit to move the boathouse structure away from the resource, elevate the structure by adding the floodplain compliance foundation, and expand the structure by adding a bathroom. Now, the application made by Janet Murnahan, again contractor Steve Skilling for eighty-one Water Street, map twenty-four, lot fifty-nine. The application seeks a permit to elevate the structure, reinforce the timber foundation, expand the structure, and reconstruct stairs damaged by storms. Now, Steve, I also had a six by twelve addition for bathroom. Okay. Application made by Teresa Brownell, Bowden and Son LLC for four forty-eight, the shore road, map twelve, lot two. The application seeks a permit to conduct approximately five hundred cubic yards of earth moving to construct a gravel pad for a future garage. The earth moving will result in approximately five feet of gradient change. Okay. Those are our three applications tonight. Per planning board procedure, the meeting will conclude no later than five thirty unless the board votes to extend the time. Any remaining agenda items or discussion will generally be tabled at that time. Our procedure for each application, the board will first hear from the applicant, and then the members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak. All persons addressing the board should first state their name. Board members will then have an opportunity to ask questions to the applicant and any person who addressed the board. Standards and voting. The burden is on each applicant to demonstrate compliance with the casting zone ordinance and state law. After the applicant's presentation and public comments, the board will discuss whether the applicant has met each applicable review criteria. Following a motion proposed by a board member or seconded by another, the board will vote on whether to grant or deny the application. The concurring opinion of the majority of the voting members present is necessary to act on any matter. The board asks that those attending the meeting for an application not leave until a final vote is made on the application, both as courtesy and as may affect appeal rights. The final vote, however, may be tabled to a subsequent meeting if the board determines that it's necessary. Conflicts. Before hearing the application, the board must address any potential conflict of interest. Does any board member here believe that they have such a conflict?
No.
I don't. Bruce, I'm gonna basically recuse myself for the Bowden project. Um, I I was his salesman for his trash business. I was the only Italian he knew in the area, so I became his salesman. I'm also a flagger for him, all right, every once in a while, so I will recuse myself, all right, on that. Completeness. The board must determine if, if for each application, the board has jurisdiction to hear the application, the applicant has standing to apply, and the application is complete and has provided all the information required under section nine point six of the ordinance. Vote confirm jurisdiction, standing, completeness. Do I have a motion?
I look to.
Confirm jurisdiction.
Confirm jurisdiction.
So. Move second.
Second.
For neighbor, now we view the merits of the application. Teresa?
Danielle Muddy.
Oh, okay. We'll go over here. We'll take that first. Okay, Steve.
Did she come up here, gentlemen?
Uh, yeah, she's. She's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Danielle. Muddy?
Danielle Muddy, yes. I live on eighty-eight Water Street. That's my boathouse just across the way.
Thanks, welcome.
I've been here a long time, so.
Go ahead, Steve. Anything on the application? That we went over, I thought pretty well at the.
Yeah, we've been working on it a long time. I think we have everything you need.
Okay. It's. Sean, do we have anything for for this project at all? Okay.
As far as butter counts or anything like that?
No, nothing. Okay.
Nothing.
It's a very small boathouse that's been there for some time. It's just has to move now because of the storms.
Storms is. Right. Any questions? Nothing, Bruce?
Nope.
Nothing at all. Um. Danielle, you might have the quickest meeting. You know.
Uh, it's a, it's actually part of the seascape now, you know. It's been photographed a million times. Not gonna change it.
Yeah. Not.
We're adding a bathroom right in the back, so it won't even be seen.
And that's, 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 uh, this is seven by twelve or six by twelve?
No, that's the other. This is three by nine.
All right.
Twenty-seven feet is the most.
All right, so both, both have bathrooms going on?
Yes.
Okay.
But hers is ten by twelve, so we can only expand, expand twenty-seven square feet.
Okay.
But you don't need much for a shower and a toilet, so it'll be fine.
Okay, that's, if that's the case, then we go over the findings of facts for the project. And as I read, if there's any problems or questions, let us know as we come up with this. All right, findings of facts. We're doing Muddy Project, map twenty-four, lot fifty-eight, and zoning district D one overlay. And basically, we're doing it because the shoreline is in front of us because it's shoreline zoning. Um. Planning board will vote for and against proof of finding new facts. Nine point one four site plan review criteria. The planning board is reviewing projects requiring cycling approval under the ordinance. Should make positive written findings that the applicant has submitted adequate evidence showing that with respect to the completed project. Nine point one four A, the proposed project complies with the dimensional requirements of Article five, Article six, and Article seven, which include minimum lot size, minimum lot width, minimum shore frontage, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, shoreline setback, and maximum structure height, maximum percent of lot coverage, and maximum clear, clear opening. The planning board by a vote of concludes that the proposed project either complies, does not comply with the standards referenced in the fourteen A based on the findings. I said, I say it's complies. Complies, complies, three zero. Nine point one four B, the proposed project complies with the district overlay requirements of section four point seven, if applicable. The planning board by a vote of concludes that the proposed project first is not located in the overlay district or complies and does not comply with the standards referenced in nine point one four. Decision is based on following findings. Um, the planning board, I would say it complies. Great. That moves up there. Yeah. If there's anything either one of you see differently, please don't hesitate. Nine point one four C, the proposed project complies with the flood hazard area requirements of the section six point four, if applicable. The planning board by a vote of concludes that the proposed project complies. Three O. Nine point one four D, any traffic increase attributable to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion or unsafe conditions in the vicinity of proposed development and adequate provisions that have made for traffic movement of all types, including pedestrian into, out of, and within the proposed project. An adequate provisions have been made for off-street parking and loading. We didn't deal anything.
I have a lot of parking on my side.
Yeah.
Okay.
And which will include the boathouse.
Okay.
Because I have a driveway and a garage that's placed for five cars. We generally don't have five cars.
So I would say you comply.
Very.
I agree. Yes, please. Sean, jump in if there's a problem.
No, no, there aren't.
Right, nine point one four.
Talking about it for weeks.
That the proposed project will be built on soil types which are suitable to the nature of the project, and that adequate provision has been made to avoid erosion, contamination of ground or surface water, interference with adjacent land, overburning of natural or artificial drainage systems, or any other adverse effects of inadequate drainage. I would say complies.
Okay.
Great.
Nine point one four F, adequate provision has been made to locate and design proposed outdoor display and or storage areas so to avoid any safety, uh, safety hazard to vehicle or pedestrian traffic on and off the site. Does not have an outdoor display area.
Yep.
Uh, nine point one four G, adequate provision has been made to avoid any nuisance to the use of adjoining public or private property. The planning board by a vote of concludes that the project, proposed project complies with the standard referencing nine point one four G. This decision is based on the following findings. I would say complies.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nine point one four H, adequate provision has been made with regard to the preservation of significant natural features and visitors available to the general public as set forth in the current casting comprehensive plan. Planning board shall not give consideration to private use in making this determination. Um. I would say this complies.
Yes.
Nine point one four L, excuse me. Adequate provision has been made to avoid any unreasonable burden or on municipal services, including but not limited to water, sewer, fire, police services. I would say complies.
Yes.
Nine point one four N, adequate provision has been made to ensure the proper operation of proposed businesses or business or activities on the site through the provision of adequate and appropriate utilities, drainage, water, uh, water supply, and search disposal, solid waste disposal, access, parking, and loading, and other necessary site improvements. I would say complies.
Yes.
Nine point one four N, adequate provision has been made to assure that the proposed development conforms in all aspects or all respects. Should be aspects with the provisions of the ordinance. The planning board complies. Okay. Following the findings and conclusions, the planning board votes uh, to approve the project.
I brought, but yes, okay.
Make, um.
A permit?
Okay. Want to make a motion then that we approved and move that way approved. Okay.
Second.
Second. Something. Two, Jeff.
I think random. Does the camera just pan around randomly or what is it?
What is?
Yeah. I just didn't know if that just went around random to.
Yeah, it does.
All right.
It depends about who's talking.
Oh, so. Yes. So just send email out to Jim and Charles and Don because if you accuse yourself from the Brownell project, we don't want it for them. We need three voting members.
Well, it's.
To pass a project.
Okay, do you think I need to do that? To recuse myself? I don't work. I mean, it's not. I've worked for great.
Well, I'd suggest when you guys get to that project, if nobody else shows up, then you discuss it with the board, and then you uh, free to go for one. You will, you will make a decision. It's a motion.
Okay. So I hate that.
I'm taking.
Thanks, Karen.
Nice. About the questions.
No other question. Thank you.
Thanks, you all.
Sean.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. That's one we'll be learning here.
But do, before we move on, do you have a cost for that permit yet? Or does it have to come later?
That would be.
I'll give you a call. Okay. All right.
All right. Okay, Murnahan project, the application by Janet Murnahan, contractor Steve Skilling, eighty-one Water Street, map twenty-four, lot fifty-nine. Application seeks a permit to elevate the structure, reinforce the timber foundation, expand the structure, and reconstruct spheres damaged by storms. It's also additional bathroom. Okay. So. Is that the one six by twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We can go seventy-two feet on that one.
Okay. All right. If. Okay, conclusions, nine point one four site plan criteria. The planning board reviewing projects requiring site plan approval under the ordinance shall make positive written findings that the applicant has submitted uh, adequate and evidence showing that the, with respect to the completed project. The proposed project complies with the dimensional requirements of Article five, Article six, and Article seven, which include minimum lot size, minimum lot width, minimum shore frontage, uh, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, shoreline setback, maximum structure height, maximum percent of lot coverage, and maximum, uh, cleared opening. Anything on that, Steve? That would. Question. Okay. Planning board, I would say then complies.
Yes.
Close project complies with the district overlay requirements of section four point seven, if applicable. Uh, the planning board by a vote of concludes that's the proposed binder. Are we in an overlay district?
Shoreline zone.
Shoreline zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be, uh, if, then it complies. The proposed project complies with the flood hazard area requirements of section six point four, if applicable. Uh, I would say this complies. Nine point one four D, any traffic increase attributable to the proposed project will not result in unreasonable congestion or unsafe conditions in the vicinity of proposed development, and adequate provisions have been made for traffic movement of all types, including pedestrian into, out of, and within the proposed project, and adequate provisions have been made for off-street parking and loading. We're good on the parking and so forth.
Yeah, she owns a property across the street, and she's got a parking lot in the garage and.
In there. So we could.
Parking.
Then it complies. Nine point one four E, that the proposed project will be built on soil types which are suitable to the nature of the project, and that adequate provision has been made to avoid erosion, contamination of ground or surface waters, interference with adjacent land, overburning of natural or artificial drainage systems, and/or any other adverse effects of inadequate drainage. I would comply. Nine point one four F, adequate provision has been made to locate and design proposed outdoor display and or storage areas so to avoid any safety hazard to vehicular and pedestrian traffic on or off site. It does not have, uh, an outdoor display area.
I can't even see it from the room. Maybe when we cut all the bamboo, you can see it.
Nine point one four G, adequate provision has been made to avoid any nuisance in the use of adjoining public or private property. The planning board by a vote of, say, complies, three O. Nine point one four H, adequate provision has been made with regard to the preservation of significant natural features and visits, visits available to the general public as set forth in the current casting comprehensive plan. The planning board shall not give consideration to private use in making the determination. I would say it complies. Yeah. Nine point one four I, adequate provision has been made to avoid unreasonable adverse effects on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, including scenic areas designated in the current casting comprehensive plan, historic sites, archaeological resources, rare and irreplaceable natural areas, wildlife habits, habitat, including the identified deer wintering areas, existing uses, or air quality and water quality, and other natural resources within the town or neighboring towns. Planning board, I would say is complies.
Yes.
I don't think I've ever seen a deer down there on the beach.
I mean, and again, Sean, this could almost be.
Yeah, I mean, the Spring Street lot down there, you will see some deer wintering there, but they come in and they, they bed down over there, but no, they don't go down to the beach.
Okay.
I've seen deer down on Perkin Street on the beach. Or they've never seen them. Yeah, they make it over here to the lot across the street from my house. Yeah. They bed down there in the winter time. Dragged my dogs.
I put on my driveway before July. I think it was.
Wait till hunting. They disappeared too.
Totally spooked by fireworks, I think. For things.
Uh, nine point one four. Try to use complies, that just not applicable to the project.
You do, you do either one, it applies, but it's really not applicable, I guess.
Nine point one four J, whenever a project is situated in whole or part within the shoreline zone, adequate provision has been made to conserve shoreline vegetation, visual points of access to the waters as viewed from public facilities and actual points of public access to the water. Uh, planning board, uh, I would say complies.
Yes, actually improvement if we get rid of the bamboo.
Yeah. That's gonna be a challenge for this.
Nine point one four K, adequate provision has been made to prevent any unreasonable adverse effect upon adjacent or nearby properties or property values. Making this determination, the planning board should give consideration to conformity of the project with the purposes of this ordinance as set forth in section one point four. Uh, say complies.
Yes.
Nine point one four L. Adequate vision has been made to avoid any unreasonable burden or municipal services, including but not limited to water, sewer, fire, and police services. The planning board by a vote of, say, three O, complies. Nine point one four N, adequate provision has been made to assure the proper operation of the proposed business or businesses or activities on the site through the provision of adequate and appropriate utility, drainage, water supply, sewage disposal, solid waste disposal, access, parking, and loading, and other necessary site improvements. I would say complies. Anybody has a question to stop me? I'm.
That like, wait, that's. Here was now.
I would, I would say that I agree. Yeah. Uh. But we don't have it. They check all through here. Okay. Right. Nine point one four N, adequate provision has been made to assure that the proposed development conforms to all respects with the provisions of the ordinance. Planning board, I would say complies.
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a little permission? To approve the project? We'll take.
Second. Second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy building. Let me know when.
Good to meet you, Steve.
Nice to meet you, Tom. Good seeing you. And see you, Tom.
Okay.
Have a good night. When you guys are signing, I just got a phone call very kind and he does not believe that we'll get to the Brown Hill A, Brown Hill project until after uh, your next month's meeting anyway. Um, because I think it is the right decision if you have a fiduciary or you have a response or a relationship with Greg, if you would refuse yourself, it's my recommendation, just for the appearance of impropriety. And then, so if we just table that one, uh, motion to vote to table that one until next month, it's okay. The world is gonna continue to turn.
So.
All right.
Move the table.
Yeah, motion second. I'm looking for helping time for the helping.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure to get you. Both inside. You already have findings of that.
I don't.
Copy or not.
But you want copies, the findings fact.
Yeah, just so I can understand.
Yeah.
And with my P and B, they might not understand me.
You were perfectly clear on the. Whether or why.
Just can't lie, probably.
While we're still in session, uh, a couple things for your all's awareness, uh, one. Um, I received a, actually Luciavelli received a building and use permit, building permit. Uh, the extension request from Anna Michelle Robinson around twenty-six Water Street. And ask, he asked me what to do with it and I said, well, I've never seen one of these not extended upon, uh, for reasons, you know, contractor availability being the most prominent one around here. Uh, and that's why they were asking for the extension, so I advised him to, uh, you know, to sign it. He did, sent it back to me, yeah. Uh, right, actually, I advised him that I've never seen one turned down. So he signed that and sent it back, but CEO cannot extend, uh, the planning board site plan review. That's in accordance with Article nine, nine point two A, I think, two A and two B. Uh, so only planning board can do that through motion evokes, much like the SEAL project that you had, uh, maybe five months ago where Bill Seal off neck here on the Castine Road. Um, asked for a permit extension, um, you all granted it. Um, so that being said, uh, that's a, uh, that's gonna be on the agenda for next month. Second is the story path walkway down at the Spring Street lot. Um, when I reviewed the plans for that and I the plans were explained to me, um, it was a lot less earth moving than I thought. That's what's taking place now. Um, yeah, let's explain, we're just gonna scratch out a pathway, um, no more than eighteen inches. Earth moving over a hundred and twenty yards, that is incidental to the construction of a project is not counted against that one twenty, it's just that's part of, it's like building a foundation, rebuild a house. You gotta dig out a foundation, many times that's more than a hundred and twenty square yards. However, uh, so really, the building of a walkway that, you know, earth moving is the project, so that generally would not come to the planning board because walkways are within the CEO's explicit realm of of permits. But now we're changing the grade down there too. Um, so I think that we need to do an after the fact. Both building and use application, and I'm gonna write them because it's a town project, but my apologies, that should have come to the planning board. Um, seeing what I'm seeing now, it's coming to the planning board, okay? So those are those two issues. And then lastly, I already covered the, uh, the Bowden thing, uh.
Let me ask you with the extension of a project, um. If it's, if it comes in front of us before, and I'm not talking about the Robinson projects. I mean, there's a possibility we're gonna have a request for something that was basically approved years ago. That's now coming, it was never completed, it's now coming forward to us. How do we deal with something like that?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Yeah, I feel some different names, for example, see, I know it's coming up in, um, portable housing stuff, um. What's his, what's his name, across the street?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, he was approved. Or, and we gotta check the things because I said five triplexes. He's saying eight, if not, I'm calling.
Yeah.
We'll look.
Okay, so the background on that project is that the the applicant applied for and was approved by the town for a contract zone. And he also applied at the same time for a subdivision. Subdivisions by state law either have a twenty year shelf life or they never expire. This one doesn't expire, so the subdivision is still there. But what enabled the project was the contract zone, and that is a contract with the town that you are going to allow me as the applicant to build in a denser fashion, more dense fashion than what would normally be allowed in the rural district. You know, and the rural district requires a larger lot size, et cetera. He applied for, the town approved a contract zone, so the contract zone is, but the contract zone expired. The day after the contract zone expires, it doesn't exist anymore, so you can't extend what doesn't exist anymore. Right? So the subdivision still exists, meaning covenants and septic and all the things that he was planning are still good, but the contract zone expired, so he has to reapply
For a contract.
For a contract zone to the planning board, the planning board will hear that, review the merits of it, the reality is, the plan hasn't changed one iota. You're really just updating the paperwork. And then you all recommend the select board to put it on the next warrant or not. Um, based upon what, you know, because the personalities on the board have changed. But, you know, the reality is it's the exact same contract zone as was approved by the town three times. One, initial application, two extensions. Now, uh, because it expired, has to reapply for that. So he's got a good subdivision, no contract zone, which means it's gotta reapply.
No, I, I was just curious to see where, when you were bringing up the other one initially, about the extension. I was curious about that.
Yeah. Planning board cannot extend it, it's a contract zone, is a contract with the town. Uh, and only the townspeople can approve those contracts unless they delegate it to the select board, so one of the extensions, the town voted to delegate to the select board the authority to extend. The other one, the town voted to extend, um, if memory serves, you know, but uh, that's what, that's what that's about, is that.
When was the initial application, the initial contract?
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, it was, uh, I was actually on the comprehensive plan at that point when that was initially brought up. Because they were looking at other places.
So the reality is, you're changing the dates on an application, it's already there, the septic is already in place, he has substantially started the project, because the bar for that contract zone is slightly lower than it would be for, uh, uh, other projects in town, you know, septic, the road, those kinds of things are already in place. The regret that, the, the issue is, is that you never got to building to enable that contract zone before it expired.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, either one of you realize it's, we're talking about the trailer park. Okay, so, all right. You know, how would you sure if you did?
Manufactured housing, mark in twenty twenty-five language. Having spent time as a youth in a trailer myself, I feel like I can do that.
But they, once. Yeah, he put up the more triplex that's there. No, but that's the only one.
Yeah, memory serves, that's, that's correct, so it's kind of a tortured legalese thing when you've got a subdivision, it's still valid, but a, and that was the, an argument, well, why can't we just extend the contract zone? Well, because it doesn't exist, you can't extend something that no longer exists, the day after, the zoning ordinance is explicit about that. Day after it expired, it's gone. And so now you're gonna reapply. Um, and then zoning ordinance is very explicit on that too, if your contract zone, you have to reapply.
Can we get copies of that contract?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
I got it all. I would not wanna make work for myself to provide con, copies of something that's not even coming for you yet, but um, unless you just are a glutton for punishment, you really want it.
No, let me continue to get caught up on the ordinance. Okay.
Well, this is, this is something that I'm I think it might come in front of us, but I, I, I think them leaders in charge of that, uh, committee that's working on affordable housing.
A housing committee doesn't really have anything, that's an ad hoc committee appointed by the select board, they have really no role here other than public, you know, talking to people.
Right.
Um, and your all's role is as with anything that pertains to the zoning ordinance, is you're recommending to the select board to put something on the warrant, if they could put it on the warrant without you, but then that requires a two thirds vote by the town to approve. So instead of a simple majority, so, you know, the right step, much like a subdivision, much like, uh, anything that dealing with sub, with the zoning ordinance is bring it in front of the planning board, you all will re-review. Um, the same architects and engineers are working on the updated paperwork that we're working on before, it's Gartley Endorski. Um, so when I get that from, and I've spoken to, uh, one of the principals of Gartley Endorski, and I wanna say it's Mr. Gartley, but, uh, you know, talk to him, and he's updating the paperwork and we'll get it over even, they're ready. But as I understand it, the plan hasn't changed a bit.
No, it's, I mean, it was a good plan, it was a good place for what we were looking for at the time, and, uh, so it, it's interesting, I've, I've heard the conversations at some of the select board meetings. Uh, and they discussed it, so it was just something that's gotta come back in front of us as actually a new application.
Yep.
So, okay. I have a question on the story path, on, my understanding is that, um, the path that they're, they're doing is similar to the, um, carriage paths, um, on, on MDI. Um, and is there a distinction between a path and something that's more like a, more like a road? I mean, um, I want, which I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that's why more earth movement is necessary, is to make that, to create that that stable underlayment or the path.
No, I, I would say, I mean, my personal opinion, uh, would be, uh, you know, walkways are explicitly in the CEO's wheelhouse. The changing of the gradient though, that is explicit in the land use table as it would come to you.
And, and that's what is, that's a bit of a, as opposed to a definition between, uh.
No, because I don't think we have a definition in our zoning ordinance, uh, that would be a ruling by me, uh, on the definition of a walkway and, you know, it looks like a duck and clacks like a duck, it's probably a duck no matter how much, how deep that, that soil is. Um, and this is an off the cuff answer.
No, exactly, no.
So, however, however, you know, when I'm seeing the grade changing that much, now truth be told, the grade that's changing is the mound that's wrecked by the road, which was fill that was taken from the Main Street project and deposited down there. Um, that the original gradient was not that way, they just, that's, that's what happened after all of that power and sewer and water got buried. Soil went down there. Um, but that being said, uh, I really think it should come to you all. However, the soil got there, that's, the soil's there now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's a change. But the difference that you're looking at between a footpath.
Well, no, I don't think, I think on the surface, it'll probably, you know, um, that, I mean, the what's been presented is so far is that the reason for it is to make a more stable path, um, which it's not gonna be more, you know, different from what it would be, but it won't erode. It, you know, it, it will, it will last, you know, and it'll be more stable, which requires, um, I don't know if it's gravel underneath it, but it, you know, it requires a preparation, which is probably a little bit more than the other paths that we're familiar with.
I would, I would submit to you that.
Problem with it, with such construction, but.
No, I would submit to you though, that the, the construction of the path and the amount of earth moving, uh, is still incidental to the project because the project is the path.
Yeah.
It's when they start messing around with the slope and the grade uh, more than what I thought they were going to, that's where I'm saying, I think that we need to at least do a cursory review of that at the planning board level, be after the fact, fault is mine.
It's, it's no fault, it's that, well, my, my thing still is what you mentioned first, if you're talking a footpath or if you're talking a carriage.
Well, no, but I think for me, and what will appear is, is a footpath. The actuality, why the additional preparation is that it lasts longer and it won't be as, as, um, you know, is, uh, easy to, to, um, you know, degrade as, as just a path that's nice. It'll be more stable.
Well, the thing is. The carriage.
No, no, no.
We have a motion to adjourn because we need to clear this room ten minutes.
Oh, yeah.
So, no, no, it's not, well, basically, well, wide enough to be, it's just made so that if, if it were wide enough for a carriage, it could take a carriage, but it, it just, it's really to make it more durable is, is the reason for it, not, and I say it doesn't look any different or, you know, specifically won't last long.
You want me to keep the findings of facts for Brown Hill Precious for the truth?
No.
Are you adjourned? I moved to adjourn.
Okay, second.